Good evening, everyone. This is the Town of Situate meeting of the Select Board. It is Tuesday, October 19th. We are beginning this meeting at six. Holy cow, it says October right there. I'm being on the agenda. I apparently have the wrong agenda up. Okay, well, we're gonna fix that.
Do you want my?
No, I have the paper ones. All right, starting over, today is November 16th, not October 19th. October, November 16th. Good start. At 6:30 PM, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Do I have an acceptance of the agenda? The correct agenda. Second?
Seconds.
We are in person, so all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are meeting. My name is Karen. I am Karen Campfield. I am the Vice Chair. And I will be cheering this evening because Ms. Connolly is unavailable to attend. Mr. Vignani is running late, but we do have a forum, so we will begin this meeting. Our first item is for walk-ins. Are there, is there anyone here that would like to address the board on a matter not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will scurry right over to the report of the town administrator, Mr. Bedrow.
Evening. November 16th, my update. Water main update, water main construction. We are done water main construction for the season, so the contractor will continue to install services on Brook, Tilden, Rainbow Court, and Foam Road. We are in the testing phase and training phase of well 17 here. The employees are getting trained on how to do that, so we can get that water source back up and running. We have done right now the pilot treatment study. The treatment plant that is finished for now, they will be back in December or later in the year when it gets cold to pilot the cold water. Again, the purpose of that is to determine what treatment method is best for Situate's particular water. We do expect to have a report from the testing done now in December to kind of give us an idea which way we're going. Water Department is planning on doing some flushing, starting after Thanksgiving, weather dependent and what's going on, but we are looking to target some of those areas where we had some water problems this summer and get out and do some flushing again while the weather lasts. Our COVID numbers continue to stay a little high. They're at 39 this past week, up from 35. Our positivity rating is up to 2.86 from 2.37 of two weeks ago. Plymouth County is staying right at the 3.2 range. The state is up to 2.32, which is up from 1.92 of my last report two weeks ago. So we did accept back to see the numbers going up as people start to move indoors. Right now, I spoke to Drew. Even though the case counts are rising, ICU hospitalizations are remaining fairly constant. They've gone up a little bit, but not in relation to what the case counts are going up, which tells us that the vaccine is working. People are not getting sick. They're not going into the hospitalization. The vast majority of people being hospitalized or in ICUs are unvaccinated, are people with severe comorbidities for COVID. So if you haven't got your vaccine, we are urging people still to go out and get the vaccine, and it's available. You can make appointments online. You can also start signing up for your booster shots. Pfizer and Moderna, people over 65, people with COVID comorbidities. Excuse me, are people who are in occupations where they will come in contact with people with COVID, so healthcare, public safety are eligible for boosters. I want to thank Marshfield. Marshfield set up some time for our public safety people to go over and get boosters. I know police and fire both took great advantage of that, so that's a good thing. If you have a Johnson &amp; Johnson shot, anybody that Johnson &amp; Johnson is eligible for a booster after two months. So again, you can go online and get those. They're easy to sign up for. We're also urging people to get their flu vaccine this year because the flu symptoms are so similar to COVID that we would like people to get their flu vaccine also. And finally, children five to 11 have been approved for the Pfizer vaccine. Mass.gov, click on COVID, you can find out where that is available also for children between five and 11. We're winding down a lot of our DPW work, obviously, as it gets colder out. We have finished paving on First Parish from Countryway up to the Carmen. We've also put down the striping and the thermoplastic. It looks great. Slow down. Chief Thompson is here. I've already spoken with him on more than one occasion. We will be doing enforcement up there. Maybe he might even stop on his way home and pull a couple people over, who knows? But we will be doing enforcement in that area. Anytime we pave the road, the next set of complaints we get is people are flying along that paved roadway, so slow down. 401 is four armed. If you get stopped at this point, it's nobody's fault but your own, because I told you we were gonna be out there. Peggyity Beach was paved. Final paving on Peggyity Beach was done. It looks good. We will probably wait for the striping on that until the spring. No sense striping it and then spending the winter cleaning it up and damaging the striping, so that'll probably wait till the spring. But it looks good, so we're finished there. On a related note, we got our reimbursement from FEMA for that legacy, for the Egypt Beach burn, sorry, yesterday. That was a $1.4 million project. We got a $1,076,000 reimbursement from FEMA on that. That's the first of our legacy projects that we're getting a reimbursement on. Peggyity Beach is another legacy project. We'll finish the striping in the spring, but we're online to get our reimbursement for that, too. As you saw, my capital, we have about 12 million?
Please.
About $12 million in legacy projects from four named storms going back years that we are in the process of working on and need to get done. Some of them are held up by the state, but others we just need to get to and get working on. So Peggyity Beach looks good. The DPW crews are out, still working, picking up debris from the storm. They will continue that as long as there's debris and the weather allows. On a sad note, they've started putting the sanders on the trucks, started getting the plows out, so we are preparing for winter. But again, in the meantime, we do have crews out. If you have a lot of debris, call. It'll go on the list. Don't expect to see a truck the next day, but we'll get there as soon as we can and pick up as much of that debris as we can. Widows Walk Clubhouse, we're hoping to hit a milestone this week. We are looking for a temporary certificate of occupancy for the pro shop, so we can move in into that portion of the building, the pro shop. The floors are down, and that's just about ready to go. We want to get rid of the rented trailer that we had, stop paying on that. I believe we've gotten rid of the rented bathroom trailer that we had for the summertime. We'll operate with porta-potties for the next couple of weeks until we get the bathrooms open. The rest of the clubhouse is coming along. It looks really good. We're still looking to dry out the floor in the main restaurant area, so we can put the floor down, dry out the slab, but it's really starting to come along. If you get a chance, the exterior is done. The painting is getting finished up, so you'll be able to go into the pro shop, get a look around, and if you're sneaky, you can sneak into the clubhouse and look what that's gonna look like. But that's looking pretty good. I talked to Chief Murphy today, Hummerock Fire Station. We are still on schedule for 12-1. I was hoping to get down there today and take some pictures for the board. I just couldn't get down there, but we are on schedule for 12-1. That is very important. We need to get that truck out of the tent and into the building. Drywall's all up, painting's done. They get a lot of work done on the exterior, so I think the exterior chief is actually further along than the exterior right now when you look at it.
Yeah, the interior is much further along. The exterior, you'll have in the next week, the outside done, but just put a second coat of paint on this week. The flooring's in, we've got the appliances in next week, and they confirm that 12-1 is a day.
So we get a lot of projects wrapped up. We should have the Widows Walk wrapped up right around that time. Kitchen equipment, beginning in December? Yes?
December, sorry.
In December. Once we get the kitchen equipment installed, then we'll put the RFP out, so we can have people come in and actually see what the kitchen's gonna look like that they're bidding on and get bid. Ian's already told me he's had a couple people interested, so we're expecting some good interest in that. It's gonna be a great space. And finally, Veterans Day was Thursday. Over 90 people took part in the ceremony and a fantastic lunch at the Council on Aging. I want to thank Keith at the Council on Aging, sorry, Keith at the Voyage and his staff. He donated the entire lunch, which was a full turkey dinner, to everybody. It was fantastic. He had staff there, a chef, a bartender. The Legion did a great job. The Citron Food Pantry also gave out gift bags to all the veterans with food, gifts and gift cards for local supermarkets. They had a couple bands. Really just a fantastic, fantastic day. Linda Hazen and her crew did a great job. But really, again, when you're in there at an event like that, you want to say why we built that building. It was great. I think it was a great way to have a nice way to say thank you to our veterans for all they've done for Situate, for the country, and thank them. And again, just really a very, very good product put on that day by the veterans and the Council on Aging staff. So thank you to all them.
Thank you, Mr. Bedrow. Are there questions from the board for Mr. Bedrow?
No questions, just I echo Jim's office to the veterans. It was really nice and Jim helped as well. Everybody touched it. I think we got about 50 volunteers. There were a ton of volunteers there. It was great. Don't have any questions?
A couple of questions. Number one, the, on the wind turbine, I know we're waiting on some numbers, I think, to get back. Do we know, do we expect, when do we expect those numbers to come in for the?
Just got the cost.
We just, we just got them?
Yep. We didn't have them in time for tonight's meeting, but we just got them in.
Awesome. The sidewalks on Countryway, the ones near Untold, are we still waiting on a few of those poles to be moved, or are those all?
Are we still waiting for some of the poles down there?
On the Untold Brothers project?
No, on the Countryway sidewalk.
I'll double check. I was told that everything means solving the cap requirement, but right now it's at the 26th.
Does it now? No, okay. The, sorry, I got two more. And then, I think we talked about this months ago, about a letter for, on the shellfish. I know that Marshfield, as a, tell me if I'm?
Oh, oh, you mean for the?
With regards to South River?
With regards to South River. Have we made any progress on?
We got it drafted. I don't know who sent it.
No, we haven't. Karen Condo is gonna sign it.
It's available for Karen to sign.
It's been drafted.
Okay, it's been drafted, okay. And then, sorry, lastly, the, with the, is there any, like, PR plans for the Widows Walk, for the clubhouse, like, a press release, telling Elf Magazine, other folks, The Globe, how awesome this is gonna be, take some pictures and let all the?
When it's ready, we can do some stuff there.
Yeah, I just, I think it would be great.
We'll do a ribbon cutting and everything when it's all ready to go and?
Awesome.
They have a whole marketing team and all that, so they're pretty.
Awesome. Cool, all right.
Looks good to me, but if you would just decided you want to go have dinner there, it wouldn't be very inviting right now, so if I went and take those pictures. But we'll have a whole thing ready to go when it's ready. We'll do a ribbon cutting, open it up, all the whole deal when the, when the spring comes, yeah?
Yeah, it's such a great opportunity. Don't want to miss it. It'd be awesome. That's great. All right, thank you. That's all.
Just a couple of questions for me. Just to start with the Widows Walk, so is Ian looking to book spring tournaments? Can he do that, or is it?
Yeah, he should be able to do those now, yeah.
Yeah, because I would think by, if the timing works, okay. And I guess the only last question is, so if we're gonna have the number, if you have the numbers soon on the turbine, can we put that on the next agenda so that we can have that conversation?
Yeah, I mean, we can. It's gonna be, we might as well start at like 1 o'clock in the afternoon, though, because we also have the update on all the forshore and all that stuff on it, so it's gonna be a long meeting. Seventh is the forshore update.
Oh, I thought that was a standalone meeting.
Is that a standalone? That was part of our regular?
Part of the regular?
But I think that's one of the questions.
Okay, well, why don't we talk about scheduling offline, but obviously, that's important conversation to fast-track? Okay. Any other questions for the town administrator? All right, then we will go on to our scheduled items. And 6:45, our, my most favorite part of the agenda is recognition of our staff that has served us well. We have three 25-year anniversary awards this evening, and we have the, our police chief is gonna start with just filling us in on Faith Elliot's contributions for the last 25 years. Is Faith?
Thank you. Faith is not here tonight, as much as she wanted to be, but this coincided with her birthday.
Did you make her work tonight?
No, it's her birthday, so as exciting as it would have been to spend that with everyone here, she went with Plan B. So, so you have me instead, so.
Great, well.
I'm sorry, so.
Well, happy that you can acknowledge her contributions.
Thank you. So 25 years for Faith. She started in 1996 with the Water Department, part-time, and then in 97 moved over to the Police Department as the senior clerk. I am now the fourth chief that Faith has been with, so she started with Tom Nealon and then Brian Stewart and then Mike Stewart. So I'm not sure if that says anything about me, because this also now coincides with Faith's retirement. So Faith has made her 25 years, and she's retiring at the end of the month. So if you know Faith, you know that she's kind of the center of the department, so she's kind of the cog that keeps everything working, from payroll and benefits and budgeting and details, and if it happens at the Police Department, it's going through Faith. So she's been quite an asset for the department over the past 25 years, and she will definitely be missed in a couple of weeks when she goes. So we're working on her transition, but it's, she's had an awesome run.
So do you think you're fully trained by Faith, because we can let her retire?
We were fortunate that we had an internal candidate who's moving up into her position, so fortunately, our cross-training was already in place.
No, 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 I meant that she trained you properly.
I've been in training now for a number of years. I started 20 years ago, so yeah, we're good.
Great, well, please extend our happiest birthday wishes to her and our thanks, and I suspect we'll have an opportunity to speak directly to her on her retirement, but we do have a little memento for her 25th, which we will, accepting on your behalf.
On her behalf, thank you.
Would Maura or Andrew like to add comments about her service?
Just thank you to Faith. I mean, I think that's a pretty good run, 25 years in the department. I'm sure she's kept you guys in check for years.
Absolutely.
So, I know, so thank you for your dedication to the time, Faith, and, you know, hopefully she'll see this and understand that we are very grateful for her service.
Absolutely, she appreciates that.
It's just wonderful for 25, I can get it. I mean, 25 years, it's just fabulous to be able to give back and to be part of that for so long. It's just, it's amazing.
Yeah, you think about all the different things that she's seen over the course of times and has been involved with. It's pretty, it's pretty incredible from the inside, which is pretty interesting.
Especially working in that field for so long, that we do not miss.
Exactly, the field. Thank you very much.
All right, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Our next anniversary award, yikes, hold on. I should not be allowed to operate computers. Our next anniversary award is for the Fire Department, Peter Downs, for 25 years. We have Chief Stu, Chief Murphy, excuse me, here to tell us about your contributions and, and, and his service to our town.
Good stuff. So good evening. Yeah, Peter Downs couldn't be here tonight. He had a family obligation. But Peter came on the job on August 19th of 1996. Prior to that, Peter grew up in town, was a Situate High School graduate, was a commercial fisherman. When Peter came on as an EMT, obviously, when you're first coming on, you're on the ambulance all the time, and Peter took an opportunity to become an advanced EMT, which is halfway between an EMT and a paramedic. He went to school while he was on the job. He got his certificate as an advanced EMT. And that was important at the time, because we were going from BLS, a basic life support, as EMTs now, to the paramedicine, or paramedic level. So it was important to have that transition. So intermediates were pretty important back then, not that they aren't now, but they were, they were the highest skill set at the time. So Peter took that opportunity to persevere and get that done. Peter was also a member of Plymouth County Tech Rescue Team. The Tech Rescue Team does specialized skills from high-angle rope rescue to trench rescue, confined space rescue, and structural collapse rescue. He did that while I was on the team with him at the time. Peter was dedicated and did that well. Peter now is a, is a tenured firefighter. He works down at Station Four in Hummerock. We just, he was down there, and we appreciate Peter's dedicated service, 25 years to the department. He's been committed. I know he's got a few years left till retirement, but we want to extend our thanks and appreciation to Peter for his time put in.
Thank you, Chief. 25 years in the front lines of helping people with their medical and other emergencies. I'm pretty sure he was the gentleman that came to my house when my 10-year-old son took a header, and the professionalism and, and, and just comportment of the department has always been very comforting to hysterical mothers, as I was at that time. So, and I know they speak a lot, so 25 years is a lot to, to, to give to this town, and we really deeply appreciate it. We will pass this along for you to accept on his behalf as well, but I'll see if my colleagues have anything they want to add.
Sure, no, congratulations to Peter. I'm just gonna.
Go, please.
Glad he's not retiring, that he gets to serve time in Hummerock Station.
Yeah, they're our fourth class now, so they're looking, as nice as it is up there, they're looking forward to the new station.
Yeah, so that's good, that he gets to have, take that opportunity and, and, please just, advocate for it, for a pair of that. But as an EMT, I mean, we never hear anything but praise for our EMT in this town, so congratulations to him and his service, and just thank you for continuing to serve community.
Do you think, the different roles, the firefighter and someone that you have to be to have, I mean, not just the medical skills, but also being a counselor to the person that's there, being an educator, maybe at the schools, talk about having a strong will but a soft heart to be able to do what he's doing for 25 years, I think is just remarkable. So just, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming in, Chief.
Welcome, nice to see you.
Look forward to the ribbon cutting down in Hummerock.
Yeah, it's a good day, but right now, it's like summer first, and that's what we're holding it to, so.
Okay, congratulations to Peter.
And last but certainly not least is the Department of Public Works. We have our director, Kevin Cafferty, to talk about the commendations of 25 years of service for David Flaherty.
Thank you. Dave Flaherty cannot be here tonight, unfortunately. He had a fire engagement. I don't, you know, seems like everybody who's 25 years doesn't want the recognition, but Dave's actually worked for the Water Department for the past 25 years, so he's seen a lot. The amazing thing about Dave is you could be anywhere. You could be in Florida and meet somebody and say, "Oh, you're from Situate? Do you know Dave Flaherty?" Because he's shut off or turned on everybody's, you know, services in Hummerock. He knows where every service is. He's been through the good times, the bad times in Hummerock, you know, throughout the whole town with brown water. Every time we had a big break or large problems, Dave's the senior guy. He's been here the longest of anybody who's currently working for the Water Department. Him and the meter reader is up there also, Jimmy John Drew, Billy John Drew. But he'd be, "Oh, that's nothing. You should have seen it a few years ago. It was so much worse." This is not, you know, it's a lot easier. So he's been through a lot, and he's seen a lot of turning around and how the department's been improving, as well as the investment in the system. And I think he's realized a big change, and I'd like to thank everybody for all the support that the Water Department's received throughout the years.
Thank you so much for that overview. Yes, as we all know on this board, having that institutional knowledge of our system is invaluable, especially as we improve it and, you know, keep it together in the interim. So thank you so much for that, and please extend our deepest thanks for his long service. He's not going anywhere, is he?
To my knowledge, no. You know, otherwise known as Flapper, you know, that's his nickname, so.
What's his nickname?
Flapper. I don't know why.
Okay, the whole town now knows that.
Well, I think the whole town knew it before, because whenever he goes by, you'd hear, you know, if people would be yelling his nickname, so.
Great, well, I will pass this to Maura and.
I have to say, congratulations to Dave, so thank you for 25 years of service, especially in our Water Department, which takes some extra effort down there to keep that old equipment working, so we appreciate it.
All right, great, okay.
Did you want to say something?
Well, no, congratulations.
There you go.
No, that's it, we're good.
We'll see you in a little bit, Kevin.
Kevin wants to leave as well. Nobody wants to be here tonight.
I know, I know.
I do.
But he'll be back. It's almost a full moon. Now, another fun part of the evening, we have our Vice Chair of the Senior Build a Campus Committee, Mr. Klement. Come back, I always want to say, is I right? Okay, Jerry's here. And I understand you have a donation for the board to consider.
Yes. Good evening, everybody. Again, my name is Jerry Klemic, and I'm the Vice Chairman of the Friends of Situate Seniors Build a Campus Committee, respectfully representing Dr. Gordon Price, who was the chairman. I am here to present to the Town of Situate our second check in the amount of $13,181.46. With our first check in the amount of $230,000, this represents a total contribution, contribution to the Town of Situate of $243,181.46. The purpose of this money has always been to help lower the tax burden on our citizens of Situate in regard to the building costs associated with the new senior center. The Friends of Situate Seniors Build a Campus Committee members are a group of people who have volunteered their time and efforts to raise these monies through various donation campaigns to help out the citizens of Situate. We are very thankful for all those who have contributed generously to these various campaigns, and we are especially thankful that the new senior center is such a welcoming place for seniors. If you have not done so yet, please visit the new senior center and observe what happens when people of goodwill come together and support it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And here's the check.
Well, yep, we will, a couple, we're gonna vote on accepting.
Okay, sure.
Pretty sure you're pretty, you're gonna be, but I wanted to just ask the board if they had any other comments. We did have a conversation at the first donation, but would you like to add anything to?
I just want to say thank you, Jerry, for continuing to raise money. You know, often we have foundations that come in, just, you know, at the onset, first campaign, $230,000, we're done. So really appreciate it on behalf of the taxpayers for you all to continue those efforts. And you're right, it's a beautiful building, and you obviously are very passionate about it, so thank you for continuing to raise money. That's great.
You're welcome, thank you. Oh, I mean, absolutely, thank you. In the meantime, for some folks, you know, it's COVID, everything else, times are tough, and so anything to kind of help and lower that tax burden, help any way that we can is so helpful for some of our neighbors. So thank you for just the continuation.
Before I ask for a motion, I just want to just state, so people are aware, so the 200, over $230,000 raised by the campus campaign, and recently, the mine of fire station was sold for almost $600,000, and those funds will be going towards reducing the Council on Aging debt as well. So over, almost over $800,000 will be applied to the debt, and that will help everyone in the community. So whether you use a senior center or not, your efforts are affecting everyone in the community, so thank you so much for that.
You're welcome.
With that, we, I entertain a motion?
Could you tell me the exact amount again? Was it just 13,000, or there's something? 13,000?
$181.46.
I didn't like that, so I apologize.
That's okay.
I move to accept the donation from the Senior Center Build a Campus Committee in the amount of $13,181.46.
Ms. Perrin?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Goodrich. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. The motion carries 3-0, and we appreciate it again. You could probably, Ms. Holt would be happy to take you.
Nancy!
Nancy's deposit's so high.
You're welcome.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Jerry. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Oh, yeah. That's right. This is the last meeting before Thanksgiving. How'd that sneak up on us? All right, we will move on to our 7 o'clock, which is a status update from our IAT Director, Mike, who's right there in the front row, on the Wi-Fi in the harbor, which I believe Ms. Curran asked for an update on that at the last meeting. I'm all right. Did you?
Uh, probably.
Probably. We're going to give you credit for that.
I asked him to go see the waterways, and he did that, so.
I did.
Well, thank you. The floor is yours, sir.
So, I don't know if you had any specific questions, but I can tell you where we're at today. In 2014, I think, July of 2014, the town invested $57,000 and some change to put the harbor Wi-Fi together. There are access points at the Harbor Masters office, town pier, community center, maritime, which is coming back around, the bandstand, and it used to be, once upon a time, on the lighthouse, which is no longer. There, the manufacturer just continued technical support and updates as of last June, so a year and a half, approximately a year and a half ago. And it's a chronic problem, where they're constantly going offline, constantly having to get them back online, get them back up and running. So, if this, I started conversations with Steven Moen last year about, like, sunsetting it, it's done. What's the next version of it going to look like? You know, the kind, it was just a general conversation. This year, we had a lot more problems with it, so it was, all right, I said to Steven, "We've got to shut it down, you know, this year, this fall." Right around the time this was all happening, a local company, Muncheon Wireless, had started lighting up the harbor already. They're already in other areas of town. And they have the majority of the harbor already with Wi-Fi, their own, and they give people two hours of free access per day. So, I had suggested to Steven that he look into allowing them to attach one of their antennas to the Harbor Master building, because one of the areas that they don't have coverage is actually all those slips right in front of the Harbor Master. They are already on the other side, because they're on the boatworks building. So, that's kind of where the conversation was at up until Waterways. And then Waterways, I met with them, explained the situation in more detail. And in 2014, the wireless access points really didn't cover that much, so they didn't even cover all the boats. Modern day wireless equipment can cover, actually, the entire harbor. Muncheon is interested in doing a proposal, so we have to send it out to RFP. The Waterways Committee has, I never got, I was supposed to get a copy of their motion. They made a motion to support, it's a motion to support the board's selectmen to creating the RFP for that. So, we'll have to figure that piece of it out. But, so I think they're generally in support of going to a third party to provide a minimum of two hours of free internet in the harbor.
Questions?
Sure. So, a couple things. Thank you for going to talk to the Waterways. I was not at the meeting, but I did speak to the chair, and I definitely still see the need for Wi-Fi in the harbor area. So, looking forward to the RFP. I'm just back for it. Question for you is, where would, if that's a private company running the Wi-Fi, if you would, where would boaters access, where would the access be? Would it be on the town website? Would it be somewhere else? And how would they see, because you said it's only two hours free, or what?
Right, so.
Who manages that vice party?
So, right now, Muncheon manages it. There was some conversation at the Waterways Committee that they were going to start governing what Muncheon couldn't, couldn't, Muncheon could and couldn't do in terms of hours and all that. And that kind of got put by the side because they didn't, some members of the board didn't want to govern private industry. Really, what our proposal would be, would be, because we have to offer it to everybody, RFP, we can't just say Muncheon, you know. So, our proposal would have to be offering or allowing somebody, seeking somebody to attach their wireless equipment to all of our buildings along the harbor, even though Muncheon's already on adjacent areas and covering those areas. And then asking in the RFP that somebody provides a minimum of two hours or three hours, or whatever we want. So, we, I guess, because we're creating the RFP and sending it out, we get to say, "This is what we're looking for. Does anybody want to bid on it?" Of course, if we get too crazy, they're going, nobody's going to bid on it, so.
So, where would folks access the service once you, what's for the token? You pick a supplier?
Just come up when you fall.
Pull them up.
Yeah, just like it is now.
So, does not. Do I check the Wi-Fi? And you pick it, and it would tell you this is this, and the blah, blah, blah. Click agree. The only thing we have, reason we have to do this is because they want to go on our buildings.
Right.
They could do this now if they wanted, but the Harbor Masters building is obviously the best building to put on.
So, we have to do an RFP to allow them on our building.
So, just really to lease the space, then not really to manage the service?
Right. We're just, we're just giving them the space, and they'll provide the Wi-Fi.
Right. And I suspect a service like this would, we're not looking, I'm just imagining that we're not going to be looking for any monetary return, maybe a dollar or something like that, because the benefit is really to us, too.
Is anyone really, you think anyone's going to bite? Are we going to be sitting here six months from now and no company? What are you talking about?
I know Muncheon's very interested. But, I mean, again, if we get too crazy with their, with our requirements, maybe not. But conceptually, they're interested. So, conceptually, I know that they would be interested.
Right. Anyone else would? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, it's philosophically for the board, if they're going to get free Wi-Fi or not, more than two hours. After that, they could charge whatever they want. Company or anyone else could. It's the cost benefit. We're just handing it over to a private company to do whatever they want. Because we're not going to charge them, right, the RFP? Well, you would put parameters in the RFP, and you'd pick the best one. Company that come in and said, "Well, it's free for two hours, and it's $10 a minute after that", is not a company we're going to pick.
Yeah, I think they were talking like $2 an hour after that, or something. I'm paraphrasing, don't quote, don't hold me to that. But it was something, a nominal fee. But, again, currently, they have the ability to set those rates and change it.
Plus, I mean, the cell coverage is fairly decent down there, so you can always, at the same time, work with the carrier who's down, whoever it is, if it's AT&amp;T, Verizon, whoever's down there, do a booster as well, and then just use Wi-Fi as like an augment.
Verizon, how do you put a booster down there, Mike?
Verizon just put a small, small tower, a small antenna down there, so Verizon.
Good.
And we, we.
Where is it?
Allen Place in Front Street, on top of a telephone pole. It covers up to three quarters of a mile.
Telephone pole that we approved last year. That's good.
And then, yeah, in the harbor, even on the boats going around. So, Steven Moen needed to buy some iPads for mooring info, and we, we got the iPads, and we surveyed the, pretty much, the entire harbor. And we never really had a bad cell signal from Verizon the whole time, so.
If, if there's a, if we are, you know, providing space on top of the Harbor Master, and it's not, and it's a different carrier, and they have just that spot, would that be sufficient for the marina?
It would get complicated for the boaters, because then you'd say, "Okay, if you're in front of the Harbor Masters building, you can connect to this one."
Right.
But if you're anywhere else, then you have to connect to Muncheon's. So, ideally, we would want one to cover the whole harbor.
Right.
And right now, they're on top of marinas broadcasting their signal across the lobster boat, the ramp that way on Cole Parkway, at the end of Cole Parkway. And they're on, the boatworks coming back this way. And they're on some of the restaurants along the waterfront. They're just not in front of the Harbor Master building.
Okay. Great. Are there any other questions about this update? We are not asked to vote this evening. This is a report and an update. I presume we'll take this up next step. What would be next steps on that, sir?
I just thought Mike could go.
Okay.
So, Steven Moen can go?
Just issue an RFP, and off we go.
Okay.
And I'm assuming that Steven Moen will be doing the RFP? It's not technical in nature. It's attaching to a building.
Yeah. You're going to have to help Steven Moen with that, trust me.
All right.
So, yeah, I'll help Steven Moen do it.
Okay. Did you have any other comments?
Not right now.
Okay. Great. Well, thank you for coming in and updating us on that. Important. Get it sorted out for sure.
Thank you.
Thanks. We are running a little early. We have a public hearing at 7:10, which my watch says it's 7:10, but the computer says 7:08. So, we, how about we just, we could just knock, let's see, we have, 7:30 is a discussed vote for a new catering service provider. Do we have anyone here for that? Oh, you are here. Why don't we, Rick, why don't we invite you up, and we'll go through, because we have all of your backup information . It is in order. We appreciate that. You'd like to tell us about Simply Good Catering, why you would like to be on our catering system.
We've been in business.
First, you have to give your name and address, please.
Okay. My name is Rick Carragher. I live at 93 Gilson Road. My catering company is at 29 Copeland Street in Quincy. All right. We've been in the restaurant business for 40 years. All right. We started off as a family business, and then I left and went and did catering. And so, we've been doing the, we've been doing the catering, I guess, at Widows Walk this summer.
Oh.
For, we went outside doing it while they've been rebuilding. Been interesting. Been fun. So, what we did was, we applied for, they're having the Beef Stew Open, they call it. It's basically the last, the last event that the, that the, that the golf course holds. All right. So, while we applied for that, we also applied to be able to cater within the town.
Great.
So, that's, that was that.
I apologize. I didn't realize you were there. I've heard nothing but good stuff about, you know, keeping the troops fed down there all summer, so.
Yes.
We do have your backup, and it's all in order. Are there questions from the board?
SIP certified, insurance 40 years, checked out, fabulous website, this great catering event with the helicopter. Is that true?
Oh, unbelievable. Swear to God. I go to this guy's house, we walk in the, I mean, I've done a lot of catering. We've done some crazy stuff. So, the guy built the barn so that he could build the helicopter. All right. Swear to God. So, he tells a story, the, he's building a helicopter. He built the helicopter. He sent it out to get it painted. All right. So, so the, there's a bunch of gardeners doing, doing his yard and everything like this, and he asked, he asked the gardener if he'll move his truck so that he can back the helicopter in. And the guy that turns around, he goes, "I got to tell you." He goes, "I am so sick and tired of moving my truck so that you people can park your damn helicopter." I was like, "That's fantastic." Well, yeah, just snapped it up, just like that. It was fantastic. It was so funny. But, yeah, the helicopter's in the garage. It was.
Good event.
Yeah. And they had a, they had a catering job, and everybody ate around the helicopter. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, thank you for doing your homework.
Yes.
Let's hear any other questions, aviation or not?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
I have a comment. Rick's dad paid me on time back in 1987 at the Colonial 1600.
That, a legacy of good service.
Yes. Excellent. Glad he paid you.
Thank you for your comment.
Yes.
Would someone like to, I entertain a motion, if someone liked to.
I move to approve Rick Carragher. Is it Carragher?
Carragher.
Carragher. Sorry. Simply Good Catering of 29 Copeland Street, Quincy, Mass. To be added to the approved Town of Situate Caterer Bartender List.
Second?
Second.
Other comments? Seeing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Seeing none. The motion carries 3-0. Are you the one in malt individual license as well?
Yes.
So, why don't we, anyone have any questions about that event on the event?
Just so you know, that's for the, that's for the golf course.
That's the Beef Stew.
That's the Beef Stew Open. That's their last event. All right.
Motion to approve Simply Good Catering for a one-day wine and malt license for an event to take place at the Situate Harbor Community Building on November 26, 2021, from 3:00 p.m. until 7:00 p.m.
motion by Ms. Curran, second by Mr. Goodrich. Any further comments? Seeing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
I'd say, "Welcome to town," but you're here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We will go back to our public hearing at 7:10, which is tax classification hearing. Mr. John Danahue, Chair of the Board of Assessors, is here with our assessor as well. Gentlemen, thank you. We are having the annual, annual discussion. Yes? So, who would like to tee off?
Sure. Good evening, Madam Chair, Board members. So, we're here for the assessment. We've, as the Chair of the Board of Assessors, we've looked at the numbers this year from our assessor. We're recommending to the board a continual 96-4 split. Just some interesting facts, so people understand. The tax rate for last year, for 2021, was at $13.33. This year, it's going to be $12.62. So, from a visual, it's going to look great. There's been an increase of, on the assessments, of about a 10% based on the sales from this past year. And also, so people have an idea, the average residential assessment for this year's for a house of $684,800. That average residential tax bills, again, $8,642. So, the increase, the average increase that we have for the tax bill for people generally is going to be about $357, which is a 4.3% increase. For those people who are watching and people who are trying to find out, you know, like, when I get, when do I get my tax bill? You're going to get your, the bills will go out in December, and of course, the first payment will be due on February 1st. That's an important date also, because anybody who has overvaluation, or they think they do, for an abatement, that's the date that you also have to file for an abatement. Personal exemptions, which also, if people are looking to get an abatement, they're due not on the 1st of February, they're due on the 1st of April. And that also goes with veterans, elderly, blind, and the CPA. Anybody who wants a form, please, you can come down to Town Hall. You can also go online to the Assessor's Office. They're online. You can come down and talk to Joe DeVito. He'll talk to you. He's the assessor. And then he'll pass on those applications to us to evaluate. So, aside from that, happy to take any questions.
Fourth. Any questions?
I'm just looking at the top five taxpayers. I always find that really interesting, how it is. Did any of the, did those shift at all?
Yeah. He was on it this year.
Sean Harris isn't on it anymore?
No, no. He's off. I think the Green Bush Station was the one that got on the list that wasn't on the list before.
That wasn't there before.
It was on the market for $15 million. We only had a value of about $8 million on it. After some analysis, that value jumped significantly.
Were those the condos over by Convent Tudes in that area?
The apartments, yeah.
The apartments? Okay.
Just so that people are clear, because I make jest of former selectman Harris, a good friend of mine. But the top five we're talking about, all of which is public information.
Yes.
Eversource Gas Company, N-Star, Eversource Electric, Green Bush Station LLC. That's the apartment complex on 50 Country Way. Abbott PM, Fileless Family, which is Zero Glades Road, which I believe.
All of the Glades.
Is the Glades area.
Yeah.
And then Kent Village Association, which is the Kent Village Project, or I say project as in development. That's on 152 Kent Street, Kent Street.
This might be interesting.
Yeah. The name that you don't see is Toll Brothers, because they've.
It's individuals.
They've sold a lot of the units off. Still many, about 15 to go to be built.
1-5 or 5-0?
5-0.
5-0.
Yeah, 1-5 Toll, but 5-0 to start and complete, and still dozens of others to complete that are really partially assessed this year.
And then you'll get Stockbridge Landing, or Stockbridge.
Stockbridge Landing. We still have about 35 properties to pick up there, out of 60.
John, you mentioned the average rate, the average home value. Do we have a year-over, I mean, it's, things have been nuts. So, how does that compare? Do we know percentage-wise for the last couple of years, what the jumps have been?
Yeah, last year was about half that. The prior year was about half that. Next year will probably be twice that. And the rate will be adjusted. It's not a magic trick. It really is a simple math problem. We just take the tax levy divided by the tax base, total value of the town. And as the value increases much faster than the levy increases, we're going to see a significant drop in the tax rate next year. But the average tax bill increase should be fairly similar, in the 3% to 4% range.
And if there's some way that we can, you know, sort of proactively, maybe do a graphic or something to let people know, you know, what this, what to expect, because it impacts absolutely.
Another one to look at is the average tax bill. The tax rate is really irrelevant.
Right.
As Joe said, it's just a math number. It falls out when you do everything. It's, what are you actually paying in taxes? So, if you wanted to do some sort of graphic, it'd be graphing average tax bills, because graphing tax rates would be like that all over the place.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. No, just to alert people that.
So, if the average of this year is eight, what was it last year, the average tax bill?
Four.
Well, it was 4% last roughly. So, it was still probably the high 7s. I believe it went up 315.
So, it's probably about 8, 8, 8,300, 8,200.
Put it through.
Yep.
Yeah. On the considerations?
Yeah, I'm on the classification considerations. I think we talked about this a little bit last year. But is there any, any sense, I mean, given with COVID or anything else, if there's lost opportunity or lost industrial space or commercial space that has, that's gone either vacant, or do we have any idea of essentially, what are we missing out on? Are there certain areas or places that may have gone out of this or been fallow for years and years and years? I don't think they're really, I'll defer to Joe, because he's obviously on it on a daily basis. But I think the problem is that we have created a lot of overlay districts for multi-use. So, what we've done, in essence, is that we've kind of slowly chipped away at the industrial, commercial base, and to make it more residential, or to, you know, certainly in Green Bush is a prime example. And I know that we've chipped away at some of the, on Driftway, that used to be solely industrial, and now we've made it a part of the overlay. So, I think the problem is that we're not expanding some of the commercial areas, so a lot of people are leaving town. But then it begs the question, do we have a lot of commercial industry to sustain it? And then you get into the business, which I think, you know, COVID's going to be something that's going to be unique, because. that's going to be unique, because the retail, is it really going to be retail anymore? Everybody's going by Amazon or shipping and, and stuff, so um, I don't know, I think we're in a, the next five, ten years, we're going to see how it changes, you know, I think, frankly. And, and that begs the question, can you ever, ever get to a split that's going to be more beneficial to the residential taxpayers as opposed to the business? And unless you're able to get it up to like, is it Hanover? Who is in?
It's fourteen.
Hanover's fourteen, that's.
Ten percent, uh, commercial industrial. And uh, there is no other mechanism, I remember you asked, I believe, last year, about, can it be shifted the other way? Then it can't be. Double check with the state. So tonight, really, the only option for the Board is either maintain a factor of one, no shifts, you know, all classes pay their share based on their totals, um, because we just aren't the commercial base. Because you saw the, see the impact on that spreadsheet at the end, a tiny little savings on the residential, and there's a significant impact on the commercial.
It's an interesting question, because it's hard to find areas in town for more business, and um, whether it's due to wetlands, or whether it's due to just a simple idea of how do you get business to come here, to utilize it because of the water? But I will say certainly, if, if North Situate is an area that is ripe for more development with respect to business, hopefully, you know, and you guys know that predicament situation.
Thank you for the thorough analysis, it is in the backup, if, if folks want to dig, do you take a deeper dive, we have it available.
Or call Joe.
Call John. Um, there are, um, this is a public hearing, I don't see anybody storming the doors to have a conversation, but would anyone like to make another comment, or question?
Say thank you, it is, it's all.
It's an enormous amount. Great, um, then I will entertain a motion on this matter.
Moved at the Board of Selectmen, going to approve the residential factor, according to National Law Act of fifty-eight, section one.
Second.
Any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor, aye. All opposed, motion carries three zero.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Select Board, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you so much for coming in and for all the hard work.
Thank you, nice socks.
Add a little color.
All right, so now we're.
Happy Thanksgiving.
I guess, uh, the next item on our agenda is to interview an applicant for cable TV, Alexander Pease, but I don't, we are actually on time, so why don't we table that in case um, the applicant is stuck in traffic? Because that does happen again, um, and we'll see if he, and we'll move on to our seven-forty, which is to discuss vote of contracts with our DPW Director, Kevin Cafferty.
Come on, Sean.
Welcome back, and Mr. Sean.
How are you?
Nice to see you.
We have two very exciting contracts for you tonight.
They are?
They are.
I'm going to start with the Stockbridge Road landfill supplemental assessment.
So, uh, we've been working with the residents as well as DEP on the Stockbridge landfill to get that closed out. Um, we've also, Time Bond has been working with us since the beginning, because they handle our current, um, landfills. So we reached out to them, they're involved with DEP, and came up with the scope of what we need to be done, they priced it accordingly, and we're looking to award the contract to them so that we could get that closed out.
Um, I will note that we received a, a resident letter, which I believe the Board all saw, with some concerns about the consultant that would be named on this contract. Um, a letter has been prepared, and I believe has been issued, has been delivered to the resident addressing those concerns, which I do, I think is in our backup, so I believe everyone should have seen that. Um, the, the clip notes that I, and correct me, or add to this, are that the, um, individual who is to be assigned to this project on behalf of the contractor is, is extremely knowledgeable, and has a deep, um, background in history, and is one of the leading landfill experts, I believe, in the Commonwealth, and so, um, unless the Board has further questions about that matter, um, that, that concern was addressed directly with resident. Um, any other questions about that particular piece of this? No?
I, I can just, I can say broadly, where, I mean, because of the other projects that Time Bond has worked on, and it is such a, for me, working with Water Resources, and trying to understand and get feedback, it's been a fabulous company to work with for transparency, and oversight, and the ability to get information, so I feel very comfortable with Time Bond. Um, because of their knowledge of, of what they're doing, and then their history in New England, and Massachusetts, this area, um, in general, that if they're going to be, you know, overseeing it, it's, I feel very comfortable.
And I, just for folks who might be listening in, um, the background on this, there's a, an old landfill that was, um, capped in nineteen-seventy-seven, located on Stockbridge Road. Um, it has been, you know, over the years, um, reviewed by all of the experts and specialists who need to. Um, recently, residents in that area show concerns about, um, um, that, um, landfill, and the DEP reviewed their files and determined that they were lacking official project closeout. Um, it was a paper trail glitch that, um, brought this, um, to their attention, that that needed to be completed, and that this contract will meet the DEP's next steps in doing that analysis to properly close the old landfill. Did I?
Close the file.
Close the file, excuse me. The landfill's been closed for a very long time.
Close the file.
Close the file to everyone's satisfaction. Um, anything you'd like to add, anyone that I missed?
We went, we went through our archives, and DEP was missing correspondence that they had sent to us, and we were missing stuff from them, so we kind of put everything together, and um, this would be the last, last portion to close out the file.
Any other questions or comments about this contract? Um, the funds were approved at Town Meeting, um, recently, and I will entertain a motion for this item, if someone would like to give one.
That the Select Board award the contract to provide a supplemental comprehensive site assessment of the Stockbridge Road landfill to Time Bond for ninety-two thousand two-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Hi, Mr. Goodrich, with your second. Second by Ms. Curran, any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
The motion carries five, uh, sorry, three zero. Uh, the second contract is about our construction and demolition.
Thank you. Um, second contract is disposal of our construction demolition debris at the transfer station. Um, typically, we go with a three-year contract, this year, um, like anything, prices have gone up, I believe prices went up twenty dollars, twenty dollars a ton, um, which stings, but we, we shopped around, and that's kind of the best price we could come up with, we also worked with social recycling. Excuse me, Sean, it was my voice, I'll let you step in a minute. Inserted around and came up with any, uh, they've been providing. Excuse me, I, yeah. Get a cough drop.
Um, so there's, there were two bids received, one was a hundred and thirty dollars a ton, another one thirty-five-five, um, in a market where it's hard to get bids, as I understand it.
Trucking's becoming an issue, when you talk to all the vendors, keeping their staff bare, um, has been one thing, they have, we haven't seen any hiccups with, um, this vendor, um, some of them are showing signs of delays in picking up materials from us, whether it be the mattresses or the waste oil. Right now, we've had that closed for over a month, we've repeated calls to them for pickup. Um, it's an inconvenience to the residents, but it's, it's not our fault, it's the vendor that we're using, and uh, we can start to reach out to others if they're available, they're starting to disappear as well, our only handle certain materials. We'll take the oil, not the antifreeze, or vice versa.
Yeah, it certainly is an industry-wide problem.
Yeah, how is it impacting the ability for residents to dispose of those types of?
Right now, we're just asking them that they hang on to them until, I mean, the vendors haven't disappeared, um, but there are delays in, in taking the material from us, we can only store so much.
Clean Harbors does handle that in Weymouth, I don't know if they have a drop-up.
I know, uh, when it's out of season for the hazardous waste day cleanups, I do send people their way, I don't know how they handle the situation. Um, but they have been running hazardous waste days this year, um, throughout the year. I know the first year, we were the only town to do it, um, last year during COVID, uh, but this year, there are still, I believe the last fall one happened last week, so we'll have to wait till the spring at this point for gasolines and turpentine, and things from the shed in the garage.
So is this a one-year, or?
It is with the ability to renew.
Yeah, okay.
If mutually agreed upon, which he enjoyed in the contract, because he wasn't sure what was going to happen, uh, but we could reach out to other vendors as well, at the time, but it'll keep it for the year.
Truckers, we do know, we read the newspaper every day.
Um, any other questions or comments about the, this proposal? Seeing none, would someone like to make a motion?
Moved at the Select Board award the contract for providing disposal of construction and demolition debris to New England Recycling of Taunton, Mass. for a hundred and thirty dollars per ton. Estimated ton.
Oh, sorry.
Estimated contract amount, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
Second is released, seconded by Ms. Curran, any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries three zero. Thank you, Sean. Um, and that dovetails into our next item, which is the transfer station rates.
Can you do the P's?
Sorry?
I think you might be.
Oh, um, no, that's my, that's, this is our charter review people.
Oh, okay, Paul, what do I know?
That's very, um, so our next item is, but I will say, has Alexander Pease snuck in that I haven't seen? I don't think so. Um, is the discussion of the fiscal twenty-two transfer station rates, and very similar to the conversation we were just having, rates for everything are going up, so do you want to walk through the proposals for changes for the coming year?
Sure, um, I don't want everybody to be alarmed, it, it's not everything that's changing, the sticker rate right now, the bags will remain the same, these are, um, a few of the items that we recently received, um, hikes in cost for disposal, one, first being the C and D, which, um, we just discussed with the new contract with NER. Um, the second, or second and third would be the mattress increase, um, that has gone up, uh, for disposal, so right now, we're, we're going to bump that to accommodate that increase in fees, as well as the furniture disposal. Um, we're finding that there were all sorts of different types of furniture coming in with different weights, some much more than the ten dollars to cover a sleep sofa for the weight, um, we started to put those on the scale to try not to lose that difference. Um, but would like to move that to thirty-five dollars as well per unit, so it, it won't affect many of the uses unless you have one of those three things to dispose of a year. We did see a large number of mattresses come in at a whack, not one or two from a home. There were six or seven on a truck, so I'm telling you, people are starting to dispose of, from somewhere else, and then this also will cover the costs for the new rate hike from the vendor that's handling it. I did just reach out to a, a vendor this evening, and, uh, who's going to get me a, a quote too, to make sure that we're in the ballpark.
So the town gets by the weight, right, to get a mattress, every dollar, instead of everything, you get one of those like Tempur-Pedic, that are like ten times heavier, and that's why, and then it's like super expensive.
Some of them, in this case, it's, uh, this contract is a unit per.
Per unit.
Whether it's a single, or a, or like you say, a, a king-sized Tempur-Pedic, which uh, does weigh a lot. Uh, and, you know, if it ends up in, in the, the C and D, they're charging us fifty dollars when they find one, so we're not even covering that cost at twenty.
Do you want to, Nancy, run through some of these quickly? I mean, I think the disposal fee comparison is pretty useful for folks to see, because Sean's point, if folks are diverting here.
This is the same presentation that you had in the spring, so we'll go by all that, and Sean's done a nice little summary of it. Um, just our hauling costs, as you know, at the special Town meeting, we had to increase our hauling cost budget by ninety thousand dollars, and it's not getting any better. Um, and this is just the tonnage, so one of the things you were going to look at was increasing the tonnage on C and D. The two orange dots are when there's been rate increases before, and you can see there might be a momentary, um, a month or two where people change their behavior, and then it bounces back, and then this is the disposal fee comparison that Sean prepared, and you can see for C and D, which is this column right here, um, sorry, it's probably dead center, C and D per ton, at three hundred dollars, we would still be relatively low for anything in the near area. Um, Marshfield is at one-fifty, but I don't know how they can stay at one-fifty, uh, but everywhere around us, Cohasset, Hanga, they're all above us. Also, the, um, the per diem changes, uh, per unit changes for mattresses, block springs, and furniture, what they are currently is in the gray line, and what the request is, is in the orange and yellow line. So this, on the C and D rate, will be a twenty-five percent increase, and the C and D contract is going up eighteen percent. But an eighteen percent increase just doesn't work when you're talking about a per pound, this makes it three cents a pound, right now, it's, um, a three, three cent per pound increase.
It's twelve, it'll go to fifteen.
All right. Are there any questions?
No, I mean, I, I remember, we talked about this earlier in the fall, and I kept, I mean, we are absolutely lower, I mean, I would look statewide, other places, for tonnage and other things, um, and as you said, given, and again, for folks at home, this is, this is the C and D, this is when you go up on the trip, they weigh you, and you go, but this is not your normal, for folks at home, not like your bag, this is construction debris, this is the big stuff, um, so it's different, and we talked about, I think, last time, uh, yeah, maybe some folks from other towns or whatever, putting that debris, it's just so much, it was the last thing that was a little dry, it would be after this.
It's by far our most costly disposal item, it's the most new and recycled, so it's where we are, it's also our biggest revenue generator.
It's tough to compare these numbers from town to town, too, because they all have a little different system, the sticker may be different, um, there may be some tax backing, or, or money from the municipality contributing to it, it gives you a rough idea.
Marshfield has peroxide, and they have a three hundred, uh, three hundred and eighty-dollar fee that residents pay with their water and sewer bill. They're the only ones who have that.
Great. Are there any other questions about the proposed transfer station rate increases?
I will just ask Sean a quick question, on that rate, I mean, we've always had to weigh increasing the rate, getting the construction workers to go someplace else, so is it, does it actually decrease our revenue?
Nancy has a lovely slide about that.
Okay. The last two times we've done this, that's, that's exactly.
Sorry, Lucy made an appearance.
What the discussion was, are people going to go elsewhere, um, when we do adjust it, and, um, this is a graph, go ahead.
If you look at the orange dots, those are with the last year rate increases, so it, um, does go down, and then it pops right back up. So if you look at September of two thousand eighteen, it was higher than the year prior, and there had been, um, a sixty percent rate increase. The same thing in twenty-twenty, we approved the rates, a rate change in December of two thousand nineteen, you're basically right where you were, it really had no effect.
Well, the only effect is all the development in town. You know, that's been up so much that, that's where the waste is coming from for that. Interesting.
But that's why we track the tonnage, because you're right, if, if you drive your, um, your consumers away, you're not going to have revenue.
Right.
Mr. Ben Johnny, for the record, has joined us, thank you. Any other questions? Any other questions? Would, uh, we have three motions on this matter. Would anyone care to make one? Or three?
I'll move that select board increase the C and D rate from $240 per ton to $300 per ton effective 12/1, 2021.
Moved by Ms. Curran, seconded by Mr. Goodrich. Should we take all three at once?
Sure.
All right. Unless anybody else objects? Saying no objection?
Move that the select board increase the mattress box spring disposal fee from $20 to $35 effective 12/1, 2021.
Ms. Curran, is there a second by Ms. Goodrich? Mr. Goodrich, sorry.
And sorry, move that the select board increase the furniture disposal fee from $10 to $35 effective 12/1, 21.
Moved by Ms. Curran, seconded by Mr. Goodrich. Any further discussion on the matter? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries four zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
It's like I'm going to the transfer station this weekend.
Someone's cleaning out the garage. All right, our next item is to, well, we're ahead of schedule by Mr. Bedrow as here. And I see our shellfish chair is here. We are to update, discuss and vote on withdrawal of the commercial shellfish pilot applications. Mr. Bedrow?
Yeah, so very simply, the boards aware, this has been going on for a while. We had approved shellfishing in Situate waters and what is part of Cohasset Harbor. A citizens group has sued the town and sued those applicants who applied for shellfish licenses, contesting our ability to shellfish in that area. While that is being tied up in court at this point, what is going to happen is we will return the applications to the shellfish applicants. The applicant or the litigants will withdraw their court suit. That'll end all the court cases that's going on with this, stop the litigation. In the meantime, the town will continue to look at our options for doing shellfishing, not only there, but other places. But returning the applications will end the lawsuit, get those applicants out of the lawsuit, stop the deposition, stop the spending money on lawsuits.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board on this matter?
Just, this is the intertidal areas that we're talking about. That is what is in dispute, the area between the high tide and the low tide. Who actually owns it and has the right to shellfish there?
Is there an update on the deed research that has been pending?
I tried to go to Attorney Galvin today and he was in a deposition, so I wasn't able to get that. But I'll get it and send it out to the board.
All right, I'll, I'll put a pin in that for a second. But are there questions from the board? We did review this at a prior meeting. Any other questions about this matter that you'd like to bring up at this time? All right.
I'll just make a quick comment. So this is strictly a legal move that we're doing here because it was, we believe, completely improper for the town of Cohasset and this group to sue the people that didn't even get a license yet to, to go forward with this. So we are still pursuing and we'll be looking into using that water over there for shellfishing. I don't know to what extent. I know there's other options that we have. But again, this is just to get the people that applied for a license out of a lawsuit because they're incurring attorney fees during this time period.
Thank you, Mr. Vinjani, for that clarification, which brings me back to the deed research. So the areas that were, we originally proposed had some contested deed title, title histories, which was the root of the lawsuit against the town. And we had been delayed in doing that research because of courthouses being closed and over COVID. So I would encourage that to be done as quickly as possible so that we could resolve those title researches. Our next meeting, as was earlier mentioned, is going to focus on our board meeting. We'll focus on many coastal issues, including the use of agriculture in our waters, I believe, is part of that topic. Is that right, Mr. Bedrow?
It can be. Most of our conversation was going to be around.
Resiliency.
Forshore resiliency, what we have outstanding, what is pending, what is further down the line. That was going to be the, the most of the discussion. So the board could get an idea of the magnitude of what we're facing for forshore resiliency, planning, et cetera.
I will ask the board at, at some point, when we have discussed about, we have waters, as you've alluded to, that are not contested from a title perspective. And we have not yet directed the Shellfish Commission to bring us proposals in those waters. Is that something that the board would like to do officially? I don't think we've officially had that conversation. And we've talked about the possibilities and I know that they've been doing homework and researching that. But this juncture, would it be appropriate to ask them to do that work and bring it to us, recommendations?
I think so.
I think so. Mr. Goodrich?
No, I, I think so. And I think we should definitely have the, this conversation of oysters in that forshore protection, given that the town of Cohasset in their harbor residency plan states they would like oysters in Basing Beach. And last time I checked, their harbor residency plan, so I think we should discuss that in our meeting. We talk about harbor residency as well.
Does the Shellfish Commission in, going, on the invitation list? Because we might have to have some boards post.
Like everybody who looks at the waters on that invitation, we invited pretty much everybody. Right now it was part of your board meeting on the seventh.
We do have our, did you have another comment?
I'm just going to ask how are we going to communicate this information back to all the applicants? That they, that their application.
Their, their attorney has been part of the conversation, so he should have communicated this to them.
And then at some point, we probably want the commission to get an idea of who's still interested in pursuing this in the future.
As noted, Susan Harrison is here. She is the chair of our shellfish. Would you like to add any comments to this before we entertain a motion?
Your direction is clear. Thank you.
Okay. If there's no further discussion on this, would someone like to make a motion when my computer reboots?
Move to withdraw and take no action on the commercial shellfish pilot applications. Now, I also move to refund applicants, application fees to all applicants.
There's a new motion in here. Captain, right in front of you. Thank you.
Change that. Move that the select board take no action on the various applications previously filed by the various private parties related to shellfishing in the intertidal area near north Situate Cohasset boundary line, and which were subject of the claim in the matter of Friends of Basing Beach versus Town of Situate Board of Selectmen in the land court action number 20 MISC 000193, based on the request of the former private defendants who have agreed to withdraw them. And move to refund all application fees to all applicants.
Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it, four zero. The motion passes. Our next item, we're well ahead of schedule, but we have both of the presenters here. Is to discuss, review, recommendations for the Charter Review Committee. Mr. Gibson, Ms. Brandelini, would you like to come join us? Thank you for coming up. Sorry, I have had severe computer issues here. Thank you for coming. No, I'm almost. So the board has received in their packet some summary slides, which I think Nicole has in front of her as well. And I will turn it over. I, I have to, before we start, I want to just commend the committee. It's been a pleasure working with you for the last 170 years on this. So I try to, oh, wait, a year. And that the purpose for this evening is for the update of the work that has, the hard work that's been done for the last year and just set out what happens next and see if we'll be in a position to present this to the community on the April town meeting. So, Mr. Gibson, Ms. Brandelini, I'll turn it over to you.
Doesn't matter. You can start. So I'm Michael Gibson. I'm a member of the Charter Review Committee. We've been working for the past year plus now at this point to go through the charter, review it in consultation with departments and other committees in the town. We've looked at some other similarly situated communities to see what their best practices are and then go through and put together a list of recommended changes to present to both the select board and then ultimately a town meeting coming up in April. So it provides you with some brief updates tonight. I know you got the full document, so if you have kind of more fulsome comment, we can discuss that later or at our next meeting, kind of go through that. But the red line has been out for comment to relevant committees that we've either changed something, recommended a change. I know the town administrator has it. We're, you know, waiting for feedback there. Hopefully we'll review that at our next meeting, December 1st, 6:00 PM, if anyone wants to join. And then following that, we are, we plan to schedule two public forums, one in December, one in January, to kind of socialize the proposed changes with other community members, see if they have any other proposed changes, questions about the ones that we've made. We'll take that comment back, discuss it, and then ultimately we'll have it reviewed by town council and then we'll present our final version to the select board again, likely in the beginning of February-ish of next year, to make sure that we can, you know, get on the schedule for, for the annual town meeting. So as of now, I go over, so I think it's important, first note, what we haven't changed, which is kind of big ticket items that were outside the scope of our mission and our authority to make changes. And that includes, there are no changes to how officials are elected in the town and there were no changes to the form of governance. So there were various discussions about that were had, but obviously can't propose those changes, so we did not. There are many things that we felt were more appropriate in the bylaws for the town as that's kind of a much more fluid document, easier to change, doesn't require kind of this vigorous review. We're, we plan to put together a list of those recommendations or things that we believe should be looked into for a subsequent bylaw review committee that should come about, you know, after, after the charter's been changed. So those are the things that didn't change. Or, you know, items that were flagged to be looked at by other committees that would, you know, have the authority to do so. So I don't know, if you want to go through some of the changes.
Sure. So some of the changes that we did make or are recommending include, of course, all references to selectmen change to select board member or members. A lot of housekeeping that was a little bit cumbersome at times, but certainly worthwhile. Removed sections no longer applicable to town governance and revised definitions or language for clarity and accuracy. So basically just brought it up to speed for 2021, 22 language. We reviewed best practices and added and revised language to more clearly specified duties of the select board, town administrator, the moderator, things that seemed vague to us. And we were able to kind of compare similar towns' languages and sort of come to a consensus on what was the best fit, we think, for Situate. So we added term definitions as well. We added or designated TA responsibilities to clarify appointment authority in many instances. So that was just more kind of clarifying language that we thought was a little bit vague, that left a little bit too much, you know, disparity. And we expanded required notifications as appropriate to digital mediums. So again, just kind of for today. I believe there are 10-year reviews, right? Is that accurate? Was it 10 years ago, I think, the last, was it 13? So that's kind of gives you a broad, broad span of time that's passed since our, our past, our last review. We added select board responsibilities, so to include emergency management policy review and town administrator performance review and public release of review summary. So there was a lot of town administrator, in those sections, we did a lot of updating. Requiring TA to be subject to employee personnel plan requirements, adding TA hiring and removal procedures. Again, parts we found in other charters to be worthwhile and clarifying language. We revised operating budget schedule to provide adequate time for review by boards. I believe we're still sort of working on some of that actively. Clarified language concerning school committee review of school operating budget. And we revised capital planning schedule to allow more input from capital planning committee, revised language to specify composition and recommendations by this committee. And we removed limitations on elected official recall. Kind of our major broad stroke changes that were made. Again, it's Karen, thank you for providing us with this wonderful, quick document. It does sort of summarize it rather well, although I will say, I felt like our work was pretty deep and well thought out. There were great discussions and it was, it's been going on for such a long time now. So I think we're definitely being a very thorough committee.
Right. And just the, as you noted at the beginning, Mr. Bedrow had a storm to manage. So we will be getting his comments and the, and the committee will, I'm sure he'll have some. And the committee will review them at the next meeting. So I imagine there'll be some tweaking of that as well. To the board, any questions about where things are at the moment or concerns?
I had two questions. May I ask those?
Yes, you may.
First of all, thank you so much. I, I, you know, I started off on that committee and quickly was like, yes. So happy that the select person can feel.
Big, is that what you're trying to say?
Yes, you are paying true policy money, so.
We're happy to have her.
No, so thank you so much. I know it is not an easy task and really needs to be done. So goodness to you all for sticking with it for almost 24 hours.
I had a question, and maybe this will be for Jim and Nancy when they review their sections. But on the, in the town meeting paragraphs, do we, since we use consent agendas so often now, should that be added or would that be something that would go into the bylaw? You don't have to answer me now. I don't know if you took that up, but it's a part of the conversation.
That's really good. That's something we have not discussed, so we will definitely put on the agenda to review.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And my second question was, in the eligibility section, should I have written down what page it is? Are we talking about elected officials not being able to serve on more than one committee? So is the definition of that committee, our subcommittees? Because we have had elected officials today participate in multiple committees. So for instance, Lynnbaum was a school committee member and also on the senior house.
Yep.
So what's the definition of that committee?
I know what you mean.
I think when we asked town councils, remember, I thought there was something, a difference between elected.
Appointed and elected.
Appointed, yes.
There's something mass general law about that.
Yeah, my, my recollection is it had to do with elected.
Elected versus appointed.
You couldn't be elected for multiple positions, but we could go back and look at that.
You could not be elected or appointed and we appoint to that advisory committee, right? As a subcommittee of the board. So I just think we might need. Great. Those are things that jumped out at me when I quickly went through this, but.
But those are good points.
Thank you so much for doing this.
But those are good examples too. A lot of the work was kind of clarifying, like, well, what does this really mean? And how, you know, where, what do we want it to say? So that was how we.
Accessibility and clarity were big things as well. I mean, it can be hard to read it points and, you know, the whole idea is this is supposed to be an accessible document for the town.
That makes sense. And I just have one other comment. I suspect when we go to public comment, that we're going to get a lot of pushback on not changing governance. Not that I, we just should all be careful about.
And I think that's something we plan to address upfront, that, you know, we may. all agree or disagree, it's definitely something that should be discussed, but it was outside the scope of our committee, it's something we didn't have the ability to change or recommend changes for. Folks want to talk about that, I think that's something the Select Board can take up at a later date, but just to make it clear that it's not something we can even propose for annual Town Meeting.
So, maybe we need to, during the public hearing, be able to write just before quote, what is that process? But thank you.
Yeah, well, I think that was something that we all came, or at least I know I came interested in that piece as well, and that was what we discovered, was that through our charter review process, it just wasn't the right place to review that material, that that's done in a separate way. And not that it can't be done, it's just that this goes, it was kind of an order of operations, too. It was like, this piece, then now maybe that's something we look further into, if there's interest to do so.
Mr. Pedro, can I ask?
Yeah, no, this is, again, this is Yeoman's work that you've been able to do, but no, to provide clarity is so important. I guess the only question, the emergency management review, is that?
That was a lengthy conversation.
Yeah.
I'm sure Mr. Pedro will be.
I think the concept there was adding in just that the Select Board has the ultimate, one, they need to establish an emergency management plan, something that should be reviewed within some sort of periodic timeframe, and just kind of leaves the ultimate responsibility with the Select Board, its elected officials, and then can delegate those tasks, and the actual substance of the plan, obviously, is not public, but that would go out to kind of the subject matter experts, Town Administrator, Fire Department, and so on and so forth. But it was something that committee members felt was important enough to be mentioned, considering we're a coastal town, there's lots of other issues and concerns that can come up, but just so folks are aware, kind of, you know, where the buck stops ultimately there. So, that, I think that was the.
Absolutely.
For it.
That's a great call. If you know where access to that is, that's what the town should be coming up with.
We have to have a hazard mitigation plan, which we have, and it's in the process of being updated.
That's different. That would be an emergency.
We have emergency response, but we have plans for everything. I was surprised to know we have a plan for a bridge if we have a breach in Hammerock. We actually have a contract with someone to get a bridge down to Hammerock if there's a breach. So, there's a lot of those, as I said, some of these plans wouldn't be public. We talked to the Police Department, the Fire Department, and some of that stuff, but for the most part, they're public plans. But we have a hazard mitigation plan, which is in the process of being actually updated now, and will be coming to the board at some point.
Actually, another good point is, like, a lot of pieces of this, we have, everything's working well, it's just maybe called something else, or in a separate place and just needs to be tightened. That was another sort of discovery.
Great. No, I have nothing to add, that's great. I think long overdue.
Obviously, the board will have time to, there'll be another more final version, but if, you know, you're up late and you have nothing to do and want to get to sleep, and you start reading this and say, notice something? Don't wait, it will be easier to incorporate as we go through this process. Just shoot an email to anybody on the committee, and we'll make sure that that gets in the cut. Because we're almost, the committee's almost done, basically, we're just going to be incorporating comments from other folks at this point.
Yeah, I would say if there's any sort of big change recommendation concern that the Select Board has, we do have our next public meeting on December 1st at 6:00 p.m. Be a good time to discuss it, because since we're a committee, everything's done by vote, you know, even if you raise it with one of us, we would need to discuss it at our meeting. So, I think that would be a good forum for it. We could also bring it up at the committee meeting if, you know, someone lets us know ahead of time, but yeah, we are getting close to producing our final documents, so the sooner the better.
Great. If there are no other comments or direction to the committee, well, thank you for your coming in and for providing that update, and we'll see you on the first.
Thank you as well.
Thank you.
We have been joined, are you Mr. Pease?
No.
Okay. We have this, now I've dusted.
Mr. Pease.
I know. Somebody sent out a bulletin. Great, then we are ahead of schedule on our 8:30, but Nancy is here to discuss and vote the mitigation for migration of eligible retirees not currently enrolled in Medicare supplemental plans.
I have to tell you, this sounds exactly like my high school science project, which was the effect of directional dissection on regenerative primary response to light. Sounds great, but you have no idea what it means. It's playing to more people my title than I did my actual experiment.
And this is a topic that was postponed in COVID as something that needed to be talked about when we were out of the woods?
It didn't seem appropriate to have this discussion about changing someone's health insurance in the midst of a pandemic, which we had no idea how it was going to play out. So, the town's health insurance provider, Maya Health Insurance Benefits Trust, has found 18 retirees that are still on the town's active plans, meaning they're not on Medicare supplemental plans, though they have the age that would, you would normally expect them over age 65 to be on those plans. And currently, under state statute, Section 32B, Section 18B, you are required to enroll in Medicare when you become eligible. These 18 retirees were never eligible, so they never enrolled. There is a way for the town to buy Medicare for them, and that's what Maya has come forward with us to recommend. Their average cost per retiree, a person that would be on a Medicare eligible plan is about $20,000 in claims annually. So, for these 18 retirees, that's about $360,000 worth of claims. So, it is useful if we could move these retirees, migrate them onto Medicare supplemental plans, that moves that cost onto the federal government, and we just pick up the smaller portion that's not covered by Medicare. So, in October, we had our mid-year health insurance plan review with Maya, and again, they brought forward this recommendation for us to look at migrating the 18 retirees. It's 17 retirees and one spouse. And to incentivize the town to move forward, they were willing to provide a 2% rate reduction on the Act of Plan Renewal for fiscal '23. As we move forward with the rest of that plan review in that meeting, we found out that the year prior, we'd had one year of bad claims, one year of good claims. Now, we have had two years of bad claims, which means in fiscal '20, our claims ratio was 96.84%, meaning 96.84% of our premium match our claims, so there's not a lot of profit there for the insurance company. And in fiscal '21, it was even worse, at 98.42%. And the driver is not the retiree plans, it's actually the active plans. The active plans are actually over 100%. The retiree plans are actually doing, performing better. In addition to that, they told us that the industry trend for the increase for health insurance for fiscal '23 was 8% to 10%, which was not good information for us when we were looking in financial forecasts at what to use as a projection for next year. Right now, we're using a 7% projection, and this was an 8% to 10%, plus we have two bad years of claims. Financial forecasts did leave their recommendation at 7% at that November meeting because of this discussion that was going before you tonight. Currently, we have 486 employees and retirees enrolled in the town's active plans, and 468 in the town's Medicare supplemental plans. So, it's 51% to 49%. The calendar year renewal for the MedX plan, which is the Medicare supplemental plan, we only have one Blue Cross Blue Shield MedX, is 0%. So, that's very helpful for those retirees that are enrolled. So, what it comes down to is we want to migrate these 18 retirees. In order to do that, we would need to purchase Medicare Part A for them and pay the Medicare Part A premium, the Medicare Part A late penalty, because they could not enroll when they should have at 65, when they would normally become eligible. It's a 10% penalty, 10% of the premium, for every year they missed. So, the average age of these retirees is 75, so that's 10 years' worth of penalties. So, basically, it doubles the premium. And we would also have to do the same thing for Medicare Part B, we would have to pay the late enrollment premium, 10% for every year beyond when they would have been eligible, which would, for the most part, be age 65. The Part B premium, they themselves would be responsible for. So, when you add up all of these costs, it's quite expensive to do this, which was another reason why we didn't think that much of it last year, when we had one good year of claims. The actual cost to do this is going to be overall about $56,923, because we have to pay all of these penalties on a monthly basis, the retiree does not incur them, the town will pay them directly, the only one that the retiree will be paying is the Medicare Part B. And then, we're required by statute to pay the Medicare Part B penalty, and then the retiree would have to pay for their Blue Cross Blue Shield MedX premium, as they would now pay for their health insurance premium. So, what it means for some of these, for five of the retirees, they're going to save $287.30 per month by this migration, so it benefits them. One retiree is on a family plan, that retiree would save $478.30 each month. The remaining 12 retirees, because they're on the HMO plan and the match on that plan is 73% town share and 27% employee retiree share in that case, they would be, would not benefit. This would hurt them. Right now, based on current rates, $91.40 per month, and that is not the intention with this. There is other savings that these retirees are going to have, we just can't quantify them because we don't have their claims experience. So, for example, because they're coming from an HMO over onto the MedX plan, they no longer would have co-pays for seeing their primary care, no specialist co-pays, no ER co-pays, no high-tech imaging, no day surgery, their retail RX would, now it's 10, 25, 45, that'll go to 5, 10, 25. So, if they have a lot of prescriptions, they'll save money on that, they go to the doctor a lot, they'll save money. If they're relatively healthy and they don't go to the doctor and don't have prescriptions, they wouldn't see that savings. And it's the same on the mail-away, they have a significant break from 20, 50, 90 to 10, 20, 50. So, there are those additional savings that they would also have. What is before the board tonight is if we move forward with this migration, would be we're asking the board to hold these 12 retirees harmless going forward, from now to whenever these 12 retirees are no longer enrolled in our plan. We would not make them pay any more than what they're currently paying, which is 27% of the HMO rate. So, whatever their Medicare Part B premium is, plus the difference to that HMO 27% premium each year. That way, they never pay more than they would have paid if they stayed on the plan that they are on now. The savings that we are going to, we estimate that we'll realize from this for the Act of Plan Renewal is about $110,000. So, it's a 2% savings in the enrollment, so it's going to cost us almost $57,000. Potentially, we'll save $110,000. So, it makes financial sense, but we don't want to have something that makes financial sense cause any harm to any of our retirees, and that's why we're requesting the mitigation.
Just one other thing that Nancy left out, if we do go forward with this, Maya reaches out to each one of these people individually and goes through the whole thing with them so that they are completely up to speed as to what's going on. It's not like all of a sudden they're going to get a bill and say, oh my God, what's going on? There's a real dedicated outreach program that happens to each one of the people that fall in this category.
Cohasset did this last year, they wanted us to do it at the same time, so it would be regional, and we just didn't want to do it.
So, the hold harmless portion, 90, basically $1,100 a month for the town, does that get paid? How does that, who gets paid that $90 a person? Is it to the individual, or is it?
No, we would only charge the individual, whether they're a direct payer through their pension, through pension deduction, only the amount that would be the difference between the Medicare Part B premium, and then we would pay the rest out of our normal budgetary account.
Okay. Questions, comments?
The cost is going to be the same every year, but is the savings going to be the same every year? I mean, the 2% savings is only, they can only guarantee for year one, right?
Yeah, year one, so we won't, we'll be 2% better than we would be going into our next renewal. Our next renewal could be miserable as well with high claims, it's not going to be 2% every year, it's just for the first year. Because now they've migrated that claim piece off to the federal government, but we would continue to want to hold these retirees harmless.
Right, so it's not a guaranteed savings of $50,000 a year.
No, it's only for the initial year.
But we're going to still have a $57,000 increased cost every year?
Your base is lower every year, Tony, you started off a lower base every year, so.
Do you think it works out? I mean, the claims we're taking out are the lower percentage ones, so our claims rates are going to go up, you just said.
Potentially, yes, unless there's some change in our active plan claims, which hopefully there will be.
Right, but we're taking out 18 people that are below the average.
Well, these are 18 people that are in the active plans right now. Those are the plans that are not performing well. I have no way of knowing if any of these 18 people are the people that are not performing well.
Oh, I thought you said they were.
They could be all the bloom of health.
I get it.
I just don't know, and it's not my business to know.
Right, you're saying that the retiree group right now that doesn't include these is performing better than I say?
We think so.
So, I guess it's, you know, I don't know how the carrier works, you know, they give you a 2% discount in year one, but that's not necessarily the baseline for year two.
All the subsequent years will depend on our claims.
Right.
The way that Maya works is they will, in the January, at the MMA conference in January, they will announce their range, and you will pay somewhere in that range based on your claims. Being in a large pool, such as what Maya is, that protects us. So, some people have a negative increase, some people have a positive increase, you could have less than what your claims actually would dictate, because the rest of the pool is helping you. Anything, any claim over $75,000, they pull out of our experience. So, any of our large loss claims, that could be several hundred thousand dollars, they pull them out and they treat those separately for all of their clients. So, we're only responsible, are basically rated on all of the claims that we have that are $75,000 or below. But we could have dozens of claims that are right at that threshold.
No, I understand that, but they're not going to look at, they're not going to do our rates every year and say, oh, we owe you that 2% discount because you moved those people over. So, this isn't a guaranteed savings to our bottom line every year, any year, except year one.
Year one is where we're going to see the main savings, yes. And we're going to have to carry the Medicare costs going forward.
Right. So, mathematically, I don't know financially if it's a financial win, is it? I mean.
Well, the exposure being that we could have no savings or negative savings over time?
Well, you're incurring a $57,000 a year additional cost, and they're going to give you a 2% discount for one year.
Right.
But they're not going to decrease it 2% in the future years to make up for that move, it's just a one-year.
And it's not a finite period, it is until such time as these retirees are no longer enrolled in our plan.
So, are you recommending that we do it?
Yes.
And why?
I'm recommending that we do it because we want to shift the cost from our own claim pool onto the federal government because we can. That's, the estimate from Maya itself is $360,000. And then, we'll initially, in the first year, realize that 2% savings in a year when we know we're going to probably have a poor renewal.
Right, but the next year, we have $57,000 more cost.
Potentially, I have $57,000 more in costs. It depends on how many of these retirees are still enrolled in my plan, still enrolled in the town's plan, I shouldn't say my plan, excuse me. It's just real.
Well, I mean, they've been in it for quite a while, so, I mean, I think it's somebody moves out of state or something.
No, they could still remain in our plan if they move out of state.
I didn't want to say passed away.
Neither do I. I want all of our retirees to live, to be, well into their 90s or over 100, but mortality tables do not reflect that necessarily.
So, I still don't quite grasp the full benefit. I know we're moving claims away, but the claims is per person, not total claims, for the insurance company doing their assessment.
Right, they're moving the risk, so they're moving the.
I know why the insurance company wants to do it, but I don't know why we want to do it.
For the same reason, we want to move as much risk away from the town as it gets evaluated for its renewals as possible. And that's by keeping as many of these people who are potentially eligible. And that's by keeping as many of these people who are potentially eligible for Medicare onto the, moving them over to the federal government. And these people can be, I shouldn't say these people, these retirees can be enrolled in Medicare.
Well, I get it, but we're going to pay $57,000 a year for the remainder, you know, could decrease a little bit, but for moving that risk.
Right, and like I said, we don't know the underlying claims of these individuals. This could be a very positive thing for us. It might not be necessarily if we just only have the Medicare costs. But as Jim already pointed out, we're now starting with a 2% reduction on our rate going forward, so that helps us as we go forward and with our rate renewals.
No, but we just said that's only going forward for year one. It doesn't have anything to do with year two.
Right, so you're, they're not going to do another reduction in year two of 2%, but we're lower than we would have been had we done nothing when we go into year two.
Right, but I don't think it's, I don't think they look at necessarily, "I gave you that 2% decrease, so I'm only going to increase you by less than everybody else."
No, I would agree with you in that.
Two questions. One, you said that part of the mitigation is late fees.
So we're required to pay the penalty fees if they, if penalty fees are incurred for them to migrate. The mitigation that we're talking about is to hold them harmless on the premium. So if they pay their Medicare Part B and the premium for Medex, they would actually be paying more than if we let them stay on the active plan. And that's only for 12 of them. For the other six, they benefit by this, making this change. They actually save money monthly, plus they save on their co-pays.
So we're paying those late fees?
We would have to pay them.
On their behalf.
And that's, we're doing that every year. It's not like you pay it once. And then second question would be.
And we already have some that we are paying.
Right, okay. So I know that here it says the industry trend is an 8% increase, and if we do this, it's a 2% rate reduction. Was there any indication that if we didn't do this, oh, we're going to be 8% higher? Or what was the alternative?
No, it would be the same. It would be an 8% to 10% industry trend. We don't know what the range is going to be because it won't be announced until January.
It's not January.
Yeah, and the reason we're bringing it forward to you now is because the renewal for the Medicare plans is effective for January 1. Their plan runs calendar, so they would want to migrate these people before January 1.
So just trying to follow what Tony said.
The estimated savings on our claims is $360,000 a year annually. That's what it says here. That's outside the 2%. That's forever.
By moving them onto that.
Well, that's total claims, not per person. Our average is 20,000.
That's for these 18 people averaging $20,000 a person.
So are they, when they look at our claims, are they looking at our claims dollars in totality or are they looking by person? Because they're taking the people out too.
They're looking at claims in totality, other than the high-risk claims. And they're not looking at that by person, they're just looking at that by diagnosis.
So they look at our group, and what the group's claim is not, they don't look at per person? That doesn't make sense, because they're only getting paid by person.
Right, but they're looking at the overall claims that are paid. They're not looking at your claims and your claims and your claims.
Right, but you're losing that person's revenue now too. So when they compare how much premium you paid to your claims, you lose those people's revenue as well as their claims.
But I'm moving the, this subsection into a better-performing pool. I don't know that this subsection of retirees is not, you know, not perfectly, you know, they have no claims at all. They could be all.
No, I understand that. I'm just talking on Jim's comment. There's not $360,000, there's $360,000 of claims that are going somewhere else, but there's also the revenue aspect of it that's going somewhere else, right?
We're not going to get any more revenue or any less revenue from them.
I mean, cost.
If we hold, held them harmless.
Our expense. If we move them to that other bucket, then they're out of, they're out of our.
They're out of our bucket that we're paying, and they go into a bucket that the federal government is paying.
But to your point, our premium will be lower for each of those individuals because now we're paying a Medicare supplemental premium rather than a regular full freight premium. So 73% of the current active plan, I think it's about $400 or $500, and the Medicare premium, our 50%, is 193. So we have that delta that we're picking up. Is it the same as $56,000? No, it's not. But that's the cost of us moving this risk to another pool. We do, as to Andrew's point, we do have some retirees currently, just a small number, literally a handful, that we pay late penalties for because they were forced to migrate. The town of Sichuan did accept the local option, Chapter 32B, Section 18, to require retirees to migrate to Medicare, to enroll in Medicare when they became eligible back in 2008. And then it became, they changed during pension reform, that was one of the things that changed. They made it mandatory, and they rescinded 18B, 18, and made it Section 18B so that everyone was required, because some towns just wouldn't do it. But anyone that went through this process when they accepted it, you ended up with retirees that had late penalties, because you can't, you have to hold them harmless from those penalties because they weren't required to do it. Like I said, we only had a handful.
We have 18 plans that are treated completely separately from every other person in town, every other retiring in town, that are significantly more expensive than if we switched them to these other plans. Because we're paying the full cost as opposed to switching it to where the federal government's picking up a cost. So all we're doing is treating everybody the same. We're holding them harmless, but the town will save money in the long run. I'm convinced of that. That's why we did it. And we adopted this idea as part of our financial forecast when we did the latest projection for health insurance. We took the 2% savings on our financial forecast. We'll have to go back and revisit that, put that $160,000 back in if we're not going to go forward with this. I mean, it's just, to me, it's a matter of fairness that these people are getting treated. They have plans that are more expensive, richer, they should have moved, they're supposed to be migrated, the town has required that we migrate everybody, and these people haven't been migrated. And it will save us money, we will hold them harmless. It really, it just makes sense. We didn't want to do it last year because just the uncertainty around the pandemic, we didn't want to be sending people out saying, "Hey, you know this pandemic? By the way, we're going to change your health insurance." We thought that was just a little much for people. At this point, I think people have come to grips, for lack of a better term, with the pandemic. We know what it is, but we need to get everybody in line on our health insurance, and that's why we're proposing this.
And in some cases, depending on their, their, the number of doctor's visits they have and their prescriptions, it may also be a cost savings for them out of pocket.
My question's not going to be nearly as technical as Tony's. Why weren't the 18 moved with the rest of the group?
More than, no, more than likely, they worked in public sector their entire lives, so they never accumulated Medicare quarters because we don't pay Medicare, we don't pay Social Security. In March of 1986, we were required to start paying Medicare, so that's why you don't have that problem with later retirees. You only have it with this subset of much older retirees. They don't qualify through a spouse, and they don't qualify on their own. So if you were someone like me, and you were a spinster, no spouse to get my Medicare from, didn't have enough quarters to get you Medicare, and you were hired at, back in, say, 20 years previous to when I was, started my public sector career, I would be one of these retirees. I would not qualify for Medicare, and I couldn't enroll. And it would be too cost prohibitive for me to do it on my own. But if my employer wants to do it and incur all the costs, have at it, as long as I'm held harmless. Happy I have all my Medicare quarters, just up there in case there's a rich husband out there. I've got my Medicare quarters, I'm good to go.
Any other questions?
Ask a possibly callous question, but if we didn't hold them harmless, do we have to do this every year? Do we say, "Okay, this year, three, four, five years"? I mean, I'm just thinking 10 years from now, we're going to have like $560,000 for folks who should have been moved over versus 100, because we know it's going to be an eight-year increase. Not yet ourselves. Next year, we might save 2% this year, but it's going to be eight every year. I guess, I don't know if I have enough information in front of me to know if these folks are going to be here in 10 years, just for the half million dollars. They should have been moved, can maybe moved, I don't, I mean, I don't know.
But would we compare the $560,000 to the $360,000 price turn?
No, that's the insurance company.
Right, but that's what we do, isn't that our state? That's our.
That's, the actual table is going to be 20 more people who are going to come in, who are going to fill that void, are going to be 360,000. It never changes, that's who the insurance is. It's just, there's a new crop of people who are going to have those $20,000 claims. You get older, you get more, right?
Yeah, I think the 360 is an irrelevant number. I guess, you know, to follow, we know we're going to have, our expenses are going to go up $57,000 a year moving forward. And we know we're going to save $100,000 in year one, but are we going to save more than $57,000 in years two?
We're going to have the premium delta that we'll save, which is not going to be the same as $57,000. If all of the retirees are still enrolled, the older the retiree is, the more of a penalty we're paying. So the range in age on the subset is 67 to 88. So the older somebody is, the more penalty we pay.
No, but that's all in the $57,000.
Right, but I mean, I'm saying that.
As they get older.
Yeah, the ones, the, the costs that are the most expensive are probably the one, are the costs that will be the first to retire off of that analysis.
Right, but the savings to the town, so we're getting a 2% savings in year one. What, in year two, and three, and four, and five, what are the, what are the savings? How do you, how do you, they're not going to say, "Here's what your savings would be, I'm going to give you another 100 grand off that because you moved those 18 people." It's a one-time hit.
It's a, it's a one-time benefit that we're going to get. We've moved that grouping of retirees into a different pool where the bulk of their costs are going to be from the federal government. If they are high claims, then that definitely benefits us. If they're, because it will help our loss ratio on the active plans, which is above 100%. If they're not, it doesn't benefit us that way. We also have a lower renewal start, starting point, so we're not starting at whatever, you know, plus 2, it'll be minus 2%. And that's a lot when you look at our renewal, depending on where we go. If we continue with this type of claims activity, we're not going to be seeing the 3.6%, 4.6% increases. We're going to go back up when they were 7%, 8%, 10%.
I, I'm going to have to just trust that you guys, because you're not, you're not answering my question, so I'll just.
I mean, there's really no answer. These are probably high claims people because of their age.
Right.
Okay? So by pushing them off, there's going to be savings there. And after, offset the 56, probably, because again, you look at these, they're over 65, they use mostly, use mostly healthcare at that point, prescription drugs are through the roof. I mean, I know at my age, when I'm on my prescription drugs, I can only imagine if by 10 years from now, what I'm going to look like. So there's going to be savings there because we're going to be rolling all those off. So that 100% claims that we're on for our current active plans, that's going to get out, which is going to impact our renewals going forward in a positive manner. And again, as Nancy said, don't downplay the fact that that base is lower. Your, your claims are based usually on two years. That's how they weigh it. Two years ago was less, the last year's better, and they keep rolling two years. So we have at least another year of probably bad claims before we'll start seeing, hopefully start seeing better claims data. But rolling those people off your active plans is going to help going forward. There's no, there's no question. It's going to help going forward. Just is. You might have one or two people who found the fountain youth, but for the most part, those are your high uses, people in that category.
Last question. Is it, again, this is going to sound callous, but is it legally possible after this to, two years from now, to remove that mitigation? If we find out that that plan is actually saving them because of the no co-pays, everything else that, this is, they're, they're actually making out much, much better.
There's two pieces to that, and I apologize if I cut you off. One of it, one of them is the enrollment Medicare. So they can't de-enroll themselves from Medicare. So we're going to own that piece going forward, no matter what. The board could, at a subsequent meeting, vote not to hold them harmless for the difference between the premiums. That's only costing, for the 12 retirees, $1,096.80. So that, I mean, that's not.
In total.
In total. That's not the cost, what's cost prohibitive. It's the, it's the Medicare penalties. And as we've discussed, you, in one case here, you have somebody that has 23 years' worth of penalties, so you're paying three times what your normal premium would be for that particular part of Medicare. So we want all of our retirees to live long and healthy lives. You just don't know. I can't tell you when this $56,000, $57,000 is going to become less. I can update you each year, but I just can't tell you.
So if I'm, to summarize, I think, I'm going to try to do this, we have, we have for our retirees a proposal that at worst will be the same that they're paying now-ish, discounting potential benefits to prescription drugs and other things. They're not going to, no one's going to transfer over to this and have a worse financial picture.
Correct.
Okay. And in many cases, there's a probability that they will have a much better out-of-pocket situation by this migration.
We expect so, yes.
Expect so. From the town perspective, we incur costs that we, the, after this year, is unknown, but is projected based on the profiles of those migrating off and the reduced, in a lowered basis, to more than likely reduce costs for town, for the town for a period of time, which we can't really project because we don't know. Is that, everyone on that, board on that?
Correct.
Okay. The question I have for the, am I missing another piece? Is that sort of the two big piles? Okay. The question for the board is, are you prepared, does everyone feel they've got enough wrapped around their head to, to take a vote on this this evening? Or do you want, I mean, what's your timing as far as?
If you're going to table it, then I would say that you're done for this year, and we would, we would not bring it back forward, because it's just not enough time to let them communicate with these, with this population.
For the outreach program. Okay. So is the board prepared to take a vote on this this evening?
Sure.
If you are, then we'll entertain a motion. Unless there are any other questions. Pam, did you want to add anything?
No.
Okay.
I agree generally.
Move the select board, move that the select board move forward with the migration of the 18 retirees not currently enrolled in Medicare supplement plans, and further to hold the 12 retirees that would incur additional costs harmless until such time as they are no longer enrolled in the town's health insurance by capping their monthly costs, including the Medicare Part B premium at the employee retiree's share of an individual HMO plan.
Motion by Mr. Vignani. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Goodrich. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Thank you, Nancy. We will move on to new business, which is, the first is to vote and discuss a one-day liquor license for Lavishly Dunn at the Harbor Community Building. Would anyone like to?
I move to approve a one-day wine and malt beverage license to Lavishly Dunn of 46 Rockland Street, Hanover, Mass. for a private event at the Sichuan Harbor Community Building on 44 Jericho Road on November 19th from 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Kern, seconded by Mr. Vignani. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 4-0. The next item is to discuss vote, well, we didn't, is Mr. Pease in the audience? Seeing none. If somebody could reach out to him and see if he'd like to still be considered, we will table that appointment, because we have not met him. Second, the last item under new business is to discuss and vote a renewal of. Second, the last item under new business is to discuss and vote a renewal of drain layers licenses. As always, we have substantial backup about the qualifications of this company. Would anyone have any questions, or would you like to make a motion?
Move to approve a renewal of a drain layers license to Laminar Construction and McGetgren Contracting.
By Mr. Vignani, seconded by Ms. Kern, no further discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 4-0. Then, we are on to other business. Are there any liaison reports?
I'll just mention what Nancy mentioned and Jim mentioned, we had a financial forecasting meeting last week, and made some adjustments to the forecast based on some new projections, and most notably, the insurance numbers that Nancy went through, and was that, when is that published, Nancy? I guess at annual town meeting?
Yeah, but I can pull up the website, I just have it because it's preliminary.
Yeah, so we'll, we're meeting again to finalize it, but we'll post that on the website.
Any further?
Nope.
Anyways?
Sure.
DEI committee met last week, another nice productive meeting there, finalizing their presentation to the board, or it might even be the next meeting on the show, but in December, we're not having a look forward, so we've got some nice recommendations, which is a favorable view, so they'll, they'll be coming forward, so that's good. And then, from an affordable housing trust aspect, something that the committee is looking at, the trust is to start a small repair grants program, so we're in the beginnings of that research, so hopefully put that together, and obviously, we'll probably have to come before town meeting, I would anticipate, so we need to ask, you know, it's, it's hard to find people that qualify for affordable housing, so this is another way in which the trust can assist folks.
Cool.
Mr. Goodrich.
The Commission of Disabilities had a, had a meeting, one of the things, and we talked about all the, the Pecati Beach parking lot, and there's been some concerns, resident concerns, they had, what they suggested, brilliant idea, and it's, we talked to DPW when the final striping was in, to make sure that all those concerns are done in public hearing, so folks are invited, so that we can kind of button up the final finishing of that project, to make sure that everything is compliant, and so then we can all move forward. So, there are more details when that will exactly be, but just to be all, go ahead.
Shark has started up and running?
Yeah, Shark is, yeah, we, everything's going very well.
Great. Okay, just a couple of quick things, you got the charter update, we'll be scheduling a December, probably, like, the two public forums will be one in the evening, one on a weekend, to be determined, so you'll get notice on that, obviously, so you're aware. The Beach Commission, our DPW chair was gracious enough to join the last meeting and provide the Beach Commission with an update of all the things that are already planned, things that have happened, and things that are on the horizon that would impact beach access, et cetera, that sort of thing, so thanks to Kevin for doing that. They also were made aware, because it's sort of a new group, made aware that there were some unfunded projects that they were going, I was unable to attend, but I believe they were going to talk about recommending, there's some Mobi Nets and some, I believe, some money, Nancy, that hadn't been spent to fix some of the Beach Commission stuff, there was a, some unfunded, unfunded but unfinished projects left over from the last commission. Okay, caught you anywhere, but they're working on that. Not often does Nancy just stare.
Yeah, I heard, I'm funded, and my little ear is just going, bing!
She didn't mean unfunded.
Okay, no, 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 they were funded, but they weren't allocated yet. And the only other thing is, I think, and Ms. Conley is not here, but she, she and Seth and I had a conversation this morning to review the data of the videos, the video updates, which is not really liaison, but I just want you guys to be prepared to have that conversation. There'll be some recommendations to tighten them up and to really continue, I think everyone agreed that the video updates everyone likes, but now that we've had a year and a half of them, there's a lot of data of when people stop paying attention, and how to, how to really tighten those up, so that's, that's a coming at you. It's a lot to watch, Andrew.
So, who's the most worthy?
Oh, well, no, no, well, we know who the, we don't know who the best ratings were, but we'll have a little, we'll have a little conversation about that. I think I was, actually.
I will say, every time I go out, though, and I think it's especially helpful for our senior community, because it is always the seniors that are really teaching, not just the seniors, but get that back, because we have a lot of working moms, too, that really, I think it's, I want to see who's watching, to see if they have data like that.
It's coming, it's, see, that was the teaser, like a commercial.
Seems to be very popular.
Maura clicks on her own like 100 times.
I do, 100 times, I do, I watch myself all the time.
So, with that, um-
I just have two, two things, I forgot. One, Jim, who's leading up the, the study for the baseball field assessment?
I gotta get an hour of PL to get a contractor on board to do the design work.
Okay, but we're doing it, we're not waiting.
Yeah, it's going to come from us, our recreation.
Okay. So, any timeframe on that?
Soon as I get the budget done, which is probably next week, week after, I'll get on it.
And the other thing I just wanted to note, and Maura was there as well, is we had a great event for the Irish Ambassador to the United States. I want to thank Brian Houlihan for hosting, and John Sullivan for kind of hosting the event, and, or orchestrating the event. It was a great, great turnout, Maura did a great job speaking, and, and it was fun, really nice person, we learned a lot, and good to keep those relationships strong, and the whole, you know, Sister City group was there, and, and it was a great event, so thank you for putting that together.
If there are no more liaison reports, then we have correspondence, Mr. Clerk.
Yes, two quick ones, one, just acknowledge, there's a letter from Robert Wigmore, discussing the verity, taking this up, about all of the oyster permits, so I acknowledge that he wrote that in, and then, I guess, yeah, we have the Citewitt Fire Local 1464, there's a, I guess we talked about this, the retirement party for Jack Smith, Bob Rosato, and Dan Sullivan. Congratulations on retirement, number one, it's going to be at the Hatterley Country Club, Saturday the 20th, 6 o'clock, tickets are $40 per person. Be there or be square, I guess, right?
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Is that, that's it for, we discussed the other letter, okay, so we have approval of minute minutes, minute meeting, meeting minutes?
Move to accept the meeting minutes for the select board meeting held on November 2nd, 2021.
By Mr. Vignani, seconded by, seconded by Ms. Kern, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries 4-0. Then, I will accept a motion for adjournment and for signing of documents. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Vignani, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries 4-0. Thank you very much.
Well done, Madam Vice Chair.
Oh, wait, I've never counted, meeting is adjourned. I, come on, I waited a year and a half. Year and a half, I didn't get to do that.
Audio's great on that, though.
I said nine, as well?
You scored very good.